Probably doesn't matter. I can bang my fist on the table for these if I need to.
You were cleaning up the room last minute.
All right, call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. We'll all rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated.
This meeting is being recorded live for CDET's YouTube channel. Next up is public comments. Anything on or off the agenda that the public would like to address?
I would like to.
All right, please come up, state your name for this record and...
I'm Sharon Ravansik at 143 Susan Lane in Half Moon Township. I'm here to address the board, but I am also, specifically comments made by Mr. Savello on his Facebook page. I read his initial posts about two years ago.
Hey, hold on a second. Because I can either verify or not, and we are not a court of law, I understand you can express your concern, but as far as we're concerned, it's hearsay. And so I'll just, I'll let you talk, but I'm not gonna, well, I'm not gonna get into details on it because we can't. So, go ahead.
All right. I'm not sure what you mean by details.
I don't want a he said, she said kind of thing. If you're just gonna express your concern, that's fine.
Okay. Um, I could pass these out to you if you want to see them and then pass them down to other members of the board?
I will remind you that I had announced publicly that my Facebook account was hacked.
I heard that.
And I reported that to Facebook, and I took the actions that they required me to take. And, and it's still, that's still the status, that they are investigating it.
Okay. I have three minutes to speak.
You do.
If I'm interrupted, I would like to reclaim that time at the end of the three minutes I have.
Please go ahead.
Would you like, I can pass these out?
You may if you wish.
Mr. Sharon, you said this was from two years ago?
Two years ago. Yeah. I'm here to address the board, like I said, but specifically comments made by Mr. Savello on his Facebook page, allegedly. I read his initial posts two years ago, and at that time, instead of writing a letter to the CDT or bringing those comments up at a meeting, I chose to write an email to this board. At the time, the only one who responded was Ms. Hardle. Ms. Perkins was not on the board at that time, but Mr. Piper, Mr. Beck, and I believe it was Ms. Hoover who were. My email at the time, and I have that email, addressed Mr. Savello's comments, allegedly, which referred to Democrats as Nazis, among other things. Namely, in this post, and I have it, and maybe you don't want me to read it.
I would rather you didn't.
Why not?
Because it's hearsay. You can read it if you want to.
It's also defamatory, too.
But it is defamatory.
To who?
To me.
It's only defamatory if it's not true.
Well, I guess we can, we can, we can have a court decide that. All right. We're all entitled to our opinions.
So this, but this was in my email two years ago, and I didn't get a response, and that's kind of a concern to me, too, that I wrote an email two years ago and only one of the four supervisors or five supervisors responded to it. And I would have thought that if it were an issue then, why didn't anybody else respond to say this was incorrect or I was hacked then?
Would you expect a response to every time you write an email?
Yes.
To somebody? You do. Every time?
That's professional.
Okay.
The United States of America is now officially a third world banana republic with a dictator, Biden and the rest of the Nazis called the Democrat Party. Democrats are evil and needed to be treated as such, every stinking one of them. And this was two years ago, and I did not get a response. Here's the thing, I didn't write an email about the flowers are pretty outside. This is a pretty serious thing, and like I said, Ms. Hardle was the only one who responded, and every other supervisor got that email. Now, two years ago, now, two years later, Mr. Savello appears to continue to show the same poor judgment that not only reflects poorly on him, but the residents of Half Moon Township. There is also another comment posted on social media recently, and that's in front of you guys as well. And this is even horrible. This is, this is awful. July 11, Biden once again proves that the pretender, Islamo-Communist Kenyan Barry Obama is still entangled in the Black House. That's hideous.
I don't know where that came from.
All right, great. Comments like this are either racist at worst and offensive at best. Neither are becoming of the supervisor position held and representative of this community. Thirty-seven percent of residents are Democrats in Half Moon, and when elected, a supervisor is elected to represent everyone in Half Moon? And when a supervisor speaks like this, members of this community cannot feel well represented. I know I do not. Finally, if I know about these posts, others know about them, I did not go looking for them. Someone showed them to me. I can guarantee that members of COG know about them, other residents in other townships know about them. They were even mentioned on the Tor Michael's radio show. So my concern from two years ago is that these, the email wasn't addressed two years ago. This is the kind of email that I would expect as a resident to be addressed. And at the very least, the comments are awful.
I think I have a spokesman. Are we gonna have 20 people say the same thing?
Well, let's see.
My name is Virginia Squire and I live in Half Moon Township. And for over a year, I spoke before this and the previous board about diversity, equity, and inclusion. At that time, I really wanted to believe that Half Moon Township could be a welcoming community to all who chose to live here. Unfortunately, Mr. Savello's posts on Facebook have revealed his belief that this township should not be welcoming to all because of his offensive remarks. His posts have demeaned people based on their race and their appearance, and they make me sad for our community. You are our representative. You are our public face to COG and entities beyond. And you have seen, you as a board have seen what he considers acceptable to post in a public forum. And I would like the wider community to know that not all of us in Half Moon Township share Mr. Savello's values. Thank you.
Thank you. Is this on the same subject?
Absolutely.
Can we just get somebody to appoint a spokesperson and...
No, no. We're not, we're not, we're not organized.
Well, it's a point of order.
This isn't, isn't exactly...
And I do call a point of order because that's clearly in the, that's, let me...
Excuse me, if you're gonna call a point of order, I would like to go back to when Roseanne removed diversity, equity, and inclusion.
I'm sorry, but I'm speaking. I am speaking.
Both of you.
I am speaking.
It was out of order at that time.
I'm speaking, and I was going to explain what I meant by a point of order. That there are rules for conduct of a public meeting, and they're clearly stated in writing. And one of those things is if, if there are 20, 30, 40 people with the same position, the same argument, the same issue, they are to point, to appoint a spokesperson to represent them. In order to...
I'm saying the same thing.
Dave, go ahead.
It's the same subject.
It, it is the same subject, and, and Ron, you, you're a frequent caller on the Tor Michael Show. I'm not as regular as, as you are a caller, and, and you get the community microphone, and Tor has quite a microphone and a megaphone. When you called a couple of weeks ago, you got a surprise on your walk and talk. I got a surprise on your walk and talk because he drew to your attention the calls that came in in the morning. And it, and it did draw attention to your Facebook posts. So, you know, what, what you, you know, raised there is that people are, you know, you said, I don't know, I'm not on Facebook enough to know and pretend, you know, maybe I was hacked, I've been hacked before. Your words were that people are good at manipulating these platforms, so I don't know where that's coming from. I have no idea. I don't know where that's coming from. But this is what people do in darkness that they don't do in light. Evil always dwells in darkness. I know I've been hacked a couple of times, and this is what the liberals do. So those were your words.
Okay.
But I'm looking back, and this isn't, this isn't a court, this isn't a court of law, but you put yourself out there and you're a representative of Half Moon Township first, and you're leading, this year you've been leading a key position in the Center County region. So others in the Center County region have drawn attention to, to a history. And yes, it's not, it's not a court of law.
Let's be clear about what you're saying.
You said that you were hacked, and I would like to know when you think you were hacked because you have posts that, you know, just looking through history, and, and I did save these posts because a lot of them were offensive, and it didn't happen yesterday. And I didn't collect umpteen posts and put them in a catalog. You had a post on March 7, March 29, March 30, highlighted with the July 12 of the Islamo-Communist Kenyan Barry Obama. There's, there's plenty. There's one recently, I wonder if Willie Brown will get a job working under Kamala Harris? She used to work under him. A lot of this stuff goes around in, in political opinion. There's lots of things thrown around during presidential politics that, you know, we don't want to share these things. And we don't talk this way in person. We talk this way in social media. But you do have a history of where you thought you were in darkness. You were posting things apparently that have come back to bite you and paint this township in a negative light.
That's your opinion, alleged.
That is my opinion.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you. Next, Andy?
I was not gonna speak tonight. I want to thank these guys for speaking. Mr. Savello, I, I did email you. I could, I didn't look the date up, and I did ask you to resign. I never heard back from you. This is serious stuff. And do you disavow all of it? None of this is yours?
I disavow what I've been accused of doing, which is racist hate speech.
Okay, and I, I just want to be clear. I think it's important to get things out on the table.
Yeah, well, yeah, but when you, when you sent that email to me, you did more than just ask me to resign.
No.
You said a lot more than that.
Oh, well, obviously...
And I can, and I consider some of the things you said as, as extortion of some type or a threat. So I didn't respond to it because I didn't think it deserved a response.
So you're not going to resign?
But that's my prerogative to do that.
No, absolutely.
Or is it?
Well, I, I, you know, in my profession, if I get an email from somebody, I tend to respond, even a simple thank you or okay, I received this thank you, and that's the end of it. But my, my question is, so...
We all have a right to an opinion.
I, I totally agree with you. My question is, none of this is yours?
No, I don't believe it is.
You don't believe it is?
But you know what?
I mean, it's either it is or it's not.
I haven't seen it.
Well, they just shared it with you. I think, I think Sharon shared it with you. And it's just, either, either it is or it's not. It's not, I'm sure. So if Mr. Piper can hand it to you, you can then look at and say, I did not do this. And that's, I think, what we need to hear. Do you genuinely...
I don't think I need to defend myself in this setting, right?
Hang on a second.
Okay.
Number, number one, okay, I, I saw the stuff here.
Right.
And I know some people will be highly offended, some people will just be offended, some people don't care.
That's absolutely true. Absolutely.
But there's nothing that anybody on this board can do, one way or another. Mr. Savello is an elected official, the same as Ms. Perkins is an elected official.
Absolutely.
Ms. Hardle, Mr. Beck.
Right.
Myself.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, we have no authority over any supervisor, one way or another.
And I'm not asking anybody.
If Chuck down there said Donald Trump was a Nazi, just like the people on the news did, I have no authority to do anything to him.
And I totally, I totally agree with you. I'm not asking you to take action.
I understand you're getting the word out.
No, I, I think it's important, there's a couple issues here. I think, I'm gonna go back to what Sharon said. If I send an email, and I only sent it to you, Mr. Savello, I only sent it to you, I did not send it to the board. And I, I thought that was out of respect to you to have that opportunity and say, okay, maybe this isn't a good look, maybe I need to, whatever. But if none of this is yours, it's really important that you look at this and say, this is not me.
I already said that.
None of this is yours.
I said I was hacked.
When were you hacked?
When was I hacked? I don't know the exact date.
Okay, so you're disavowing all of this?
What I, I followed, I followed the procedures that Facebook gives, instructs you to do.
Okay.
Okay, not, not only that, but they have community standards as well.
Yeah.
Okay, and they're pretty strict.
Yeah.
All right, so even if you have strong political speech, and it's something that violates their community standards, it's not gonna be there.
No, and I, I understand that. I, I just want to, so when did you report being hacked? I think this is critical. I mean...
As soon as I found out that this stuff was going on. That's how.
Right, and so I'm just, there is an attorney here, and it is Ms. Ravansik, who is an attorney. And so I'm just, I, it's...
Well, we're not in a court of law here, okay?
No, my point is, it's important to get the dates and facts out. So you disavow all of this?
I don't believe it is at this point.
I'm sorry?
If we, you know, I don't believe it is.
Believe it is.
Okay, that's your opinion, Andy. Give your opinion, and let's be, and let's have a, have it over with.
I think it's important to get facts out before we, can, deal, we have to deal with facts.
Is that what you're asking?
You disavow all of this.
You stated it?
You disavow...
This is not a conversation. This is public comment period.
Well, you're making a conversation.
Because you're making allegations without, without stating that it's alleged or that this is what it's purported or purported to be.
You disavow all of this. That's my question.
Yes.
It's not an allegation, it's a question.
I disavow making the same, the kind of speech that I've been accused of making. I've already said what that is. I've been accused of making racist comments, hate speech, and all this stuff.
Yeah.
And it's nonsense.
Okay, and that's fine. I think it's, that's what I think we need to hear.
It won't even be allowed on the platform.
You're saying you didn't do this. That's all we need to hear. I did not do that. That is not me.
Well, I have to read them, okay? I haven't seen them.
Do, would you like them?
We're, we're not gonna get into that.
I'm not gonna get into this.
There's no point in having that discussion.
But this is public comment.
We were here to do a job and, and do business of the township.
Right.
And we have quite an extensive agenda tonight.
Right.
I'm not gonna banner with you, with anybody tonight.
Okay, I, I just want to be, I want to be clear because, you know, as we're filming this, you disavow this?
I've heard the accusations.
You were hacked, you don't know when you were hacked. It's just, I'm just trying to...
It's what I said.
Okay, good, because it's important in the public, in this, in the Center Region, you are a major person, and as a public figure, your standard is a little bit lower.
A major person. I don't know what that means, but...
Well, I mean, you're a public figure. You're known in the community.
Okay.
That's, as a public figure.
You're an elected representative.
You're an elected representative, and, and I, and I really, I like what Virginia said. I, I want to make sure that the citizens of Half Moon, I, I, this was, made me sad. It just made me sad. So, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Next.
Tom McCaffrey, Doe Drive. I'm a newbie here. I moved here three and a half years ago, and I love this place. My first time I met Mr. Savello, we had a nice conversation in my driveway on Doe Drive. He might have been politicking and... He might have been politic, and then I think I've seen him in the game lands a few times. More than a few times. Next contact we had on November 19th in the Citizens for a Better Half Moon Township or Facebook page, there was a discussion going on about Mr. Buck with the school district. And we were all bantering back and forth. You were defending your position on that, you know, subject, and everybody was kind of talking in on whether you chose the right words, you know, on your position on him. And in that thread, people started talking about these Facebook things, especially the one as far as every time I take a dump, it's a Democrat. So, I clicked on your profile at that moment. I mean, we're talking. You're engaged. So, I know it was you. I click on the profile, and I find these things. Okay? I know something about the Internet, and so do a lot of people. I believe you're naive about it. I have a resident expert in my house right now. He just left. He's visiting. He does the social media for the United Nations Environmental Program in Kenya. He has a master's degree in multimedia, and he does investigative freelance work as far as Internet sleuthing. And we had a discussion today and explained that when people get hacked, it's typically someone from India. They're typically not going to be commenting on things that someone would typically say in... So, basically, it's hard to conceive on this hack thing. And you still haven't addressed when you were hacked. You had an opportunity that day when people were talking about it to go to your page, report to Facebook, delete them. You could have deleted them. They were on the page that day. People were talking about it. You could have deleted them. It was you. You didn't do it. So, there's some inconsistency here as far as accountability and whether it was, you know... And I don't think that's a he said, she said. If Mr. Trump puts something on his social media platform, it's a statement. He found that out with Twitter when Mr. Trump was president. It was an official statement on social media. It counted as that, you know, legally. When you put something on social media, it's not hearsay. It's you speaking. That's been demonstrated by our president. My question is... I mean, I was shocked because I think you seemed like a nice guy when I met you. And you probably are a decent guy. But some of these things are really messed up. Referring to in a meme about Michelle Obama at the Black House in a multicultural, you know, town? It's there. I mean, there's screenshots of that stuff. My question is, I moved here, and I pay taxes, more taxes than I paid in Holliesburg, and I expect representation. I don't see how you can... Forty percent of this community are Democrats. How anybody can feel that forty percent that you represent? I don't know how you... I feel you could represent me. With knowing what your feelings on things, I don't know how we could have a conversation about how you would represent me. I would go to somebody else. I'm seeing a complete disregard in some of the attitude here in my first meeting of just, "Well, we don't have to give a damn what you people think. We're sitting here on a board, and we can just..." There's a complete dis... Wow, I'm stunned. If this went on, in fact, I made a comment to someone, if this same went on in Frankstown Township in Holliesburg, you wouldn't need a traffic cop out there. The fact that this is all you see in this town with something this serious? It's serious. It's mind-boggling to me. And I'm shocked. You know, and I'm not going to do he said, she said. I don't believe you. I'm sorry. And I feel for you because you're in a tough situation. I mean, I wouldn't want to be you. I'm sure you're very uncomfortable. People do say things that they would regret. But you need to either apologize or do something, some way to assure people that you represent the rest of this community. Because I don't know how anybody can count on you. That's all I've got to say, you know? I don't know. I saw a lot more concern for what the community had back home. You know, this is my home now. I absolutely love it here. And I'm going to be continuing to be involved in this community. I volunteer with the EMS, doing volunteer drives, community cafe. I'm getting immersed in helping. I'm going to start being a coach at the little cafe over on Hamilton there. I'm going to be a job coach for some of the people there. Got some good things going here. But also, I'm not going to lay down when I see stuff going like this on. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Bruce Helms, 45-year resident. It's the first time I've ever spoken to the board. I've known Ron for two years, ever since he won his election. In that interim, we've been together many times, campaigning, door-knocking, social events. Never in that time have I heard a racist comment come from that man. He's been impugned professionally by his opponents on the Solar Power Purchase Agreement Board. He's withstood a lot of abuse, and still he continues to work hard for this township. I believe in what he's doing. I believe in his heart. He's got everybody's better interest in mind. And I'm going to echo here that this is not a court of law. But even if it were, the man is innocent until proven guilty in that court of law. Thank you.
Mr. Quo...
My name's Will Quoich. I've been a township resident for 38 years. I run a business out of the township. I've been a township supervisor for seven and a half years. And I didn't hear this stuff till tonight, okay? And this is just my personal feelings. You know, some people saying you said it. You said you did say it. I think you should get a hold of the authorities, like the state police or who does this. Have them check out your Facebook, and then somebody, you or whoever, you know, when the investigation's done, bring back a report. That's the way to handle the situation. That's my opinion. I know the board can't do nothing about it, you know? So, that's all I've got to say on the issue, so...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Roseanne Hoover. I've been a resident for 34 years, and I would like to thank and lift up Mr. Servello for his time and effort in research to find facts concerning the solar power purchasing plan and all the other township decisions, COG decisions, that he was behind. He had a hell of a year, being in the minority on every call. But he is all about facts and truth. I do not look at Facebook because when I do, I find things... I would like to think better of people. I stay away and wear my rose-colored glasses. I appreciate his courage in exposing the truth and standing up for the truth, and even when all the others find it very inconvenient. And as far as the I would do, I did make the motion last year to include that with the public comments, not remove it.
No, you made the...
Motion to include it with the public comments.
But that was a vote in... I mean, since you're addressing it, that was...
Uh huh.
You called for a vote, and when you called for a vote...
I called for a motion, yes.
It has to be on the agenda. You can't...
I believe that was researched. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else while we're still on the subject? We have a busy meeting tonight.
Karen Miller, I was in Half Moon again. I'm as concerned as anybody else here in this township because you are a representative of everybody. Yeah, I'll try.
Okay.
I feel like I'm shouting. I have to shout at my husband, too, because he's totally deaf and can't hear me. So, again, I'm just as concerned as everybody else here in the township. The gentleman that talked about getting an investigation and actually getting when you were hacked so that people can go back and... If there are Facebook pages that were before you were hacked and are there, and again, to verify if it was you or wasn't you. You are supposed to be representing all of us, and as a representative of all of us, you should be acting as civilly as the rest of us are when we come to either these meetings or when you go out to represent Half Moon Township on other COGs. And that's what I'm concerned about. I also have written this board, emailed them, and not gotten a response, and this was before you, Tammy, except for Patty Hardle. And again, it was addressed to everybody on this board. And again, that concerns me, too. I pay my taxes here. I've been here for over 25 years. Pay on time, actually pay early every year, okay? I am a law-abiding citizen, and I should think that if I have a concern about something that's going on at the township, that somebody on this board should be addressing it. And it's not. I know that Chuck, you don't email at all. You don't want anything to do with it. And Dave, you don't email. Ron, you don't email. Again, I have never emailed, Tammy. You weren't on the board when I did, and Patty Hardle is the only one that has responded to me. So, again, that's a big concern because you should be representing all of us, not just the percentage that you agree with. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, no, anybody else? All right. There are none.
Mr. Chair, if the citizens are done, I'd like to just make a comment, if I may.
Please.
No, for all of our citizens, that we hear you. Other municipalities will hear you if they haven't already. They've had similar concerns and similar comments brought to them. So, know that your comments are not on deaf ears. Okay? And I also just want to point out that in our own etiquette for our township, it's at the beginning of every meeting. It states which we are in an environment committed to an environment in which all individuals are treated with respect and dignity. So, just as a reminder, that is on our agenda as far as our etiquette goes with our township.
Thank you. Moving on. Next up, approval of the minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of November 14, 2024? Some of... A motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moving to second. Any discussion by the board? Call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next up, the consent agenda. It's ratification of the bills list for 11-824 through 11-2024. General fund amount of $40,117.28. And ratification of the bills list for the period of 11-2124 through 12-924. And the general fund amounting to $36,109.93. Open space preservation fund amounting to $50. And the state highway liquid fuels fund in the amount of $1,668.15. And approval of the meeting dates for next year for January 23, February 13, March 13, April 10, May 8, June 12, July 10, August 14, September 11, October 9, November 13, and December 11. Do I hear a motion to approve? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moving to second. Any discussion by the board?
I just have one question for clarification. We have our January 23 meeting, but also at the end of this agenda that our next meeting is actually Monday, January 6. Will that be a regular meeting or just a reorg meeting? Just for clarification.
As far as I know, it's just going to be a reorg meeting because it's provided for by law.
But we are going to have the reorg meeting and a very short regular meeting.
Oh, we are?
A couple of things. Sorry.
On the 6. Okay, so does that need to be included?
Yeah, that will be in the...
As these dates?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And we have no control over the January.
Yeah, that I knew, but if we're having a regular meeting, it needs to be advertised, so...
January 6, then it's still 7:00?
No, January 6 is 4:00.
Oh.
So, that's a change in time for everybody. The January 6 is 4:00, and that's because of CNET availability, because of all the reorg meetings that have to happen. But then we'll still have our January 23 meeting at the 7:00, correct, Amy?
No, it'll follow the organization meeting.
The January 23?
The January 6.
Well, right, a regular meeting, but the January 23 will go back to our normal time.
Yes, oh, yes.
Yes.
So, January 6, we'll have the reorg, and then right after that, we'll have a short public meeting.
A short regular meeting.
Regular meeting, okay.
Yes, and all of that starts at 4:00 on the 6.
Can we get a second?
Well, do we have to revise the motion to include the January 6?
I don't think so because it's provided for by law. She's going to advertise it anyways.
It'll be right. It'll be advertised, right, yeah.
We have a second?
Patty, second.
Okay. Call for the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Center County Long Range Transportation Plan update comments. Possible motion to approve the comments sent to Ms. Ann Messner on the Center County Long Range Transportation Plan. Do I hear a motion?
We'll have discussion on this before we vote, right?
Yeah, always.
Yeah, so moved.
A motion. How about a second?
Second.
Moving to second. Now, discussion by the board.
I mean, if anybody wants to add anything, but it sounds like... Doesn't look like you got many comments back on that, so whatever.
The only thing I was concerned about, we've been putting up with a drainage issue on 550 for like 50 years at I Dog.
550 for like 50 years at I Dog. And I mean, as far as the rest of the center region goes, you know,
Yeah.
They're going to get a priority over us anyways. But, you know, ours are simple, you know? If you take care of 550...
Yeah, the drainage is a big issue.
I think that's one. I think there's another issue on 550, and that's visibility. And some of the way that the slope, the curvature of the roads, there's blind, there are blind spots on 550.
There are. By the Statue of Liberty is a bad spot.
They fixed one of them a while ago, quite a while ago. There was one that they fixed.
One coming this way towards Trotter Farms. Yeah, there was a big bump in the road there, and they straightened that curve.
But there's still a couple nasty ones on 550.
But usually those are addressed with driveway visibility. If a driveway or, you know, that's... If it's a road, if it's a road with no weather inputs, it's not an issue, but...
I don't remember what year you moved out here. You may have missed the 550, because usually after you came past Sawmill Road coming this way, there's a big bump. And if you had an older car, the front end come down and hit the road.
Yeah, yeah.
You were going too fast. But I thought everybody had good comments, and, I mean, I don't really want to root into the patent or college township's business too much, so...
No, I'm glad you put the drainage tip on there, though. I'm good with it.
I'm going to defer to comments.
I think we had a motion, a second, so... All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Rule of the Center Region Council of Governments 2025 budget. Do I hear a motion? To ratify it?
So moved.
How about a second?
Second.
Moving to second. Any comments by anybody?
Well, having been deeply involved with this the whole year, I felt that they once again exceeded themselves in their ability to spend money. They trimmed the percent increase by digging deeply into fund balances. Their significant fund balance, they've always carried a pretty significant fund balance. But if they had not cut deeply into that fund balance, which is still taxpayer money, they would have had a double-digit increase, again, consecutive increase. So I'm not... And they had a program plan that was extensive. And some of the methods of accomplishing or providing solutions to the needs, I felt were not really well, you know, well-thought-out or presented. So I had problems with the budget. I thought it was a bloated budget myself, so... And that's how I feel about the final budget as well. Comments I have.
I will say that I don't think that the Center Region COG makes much effort to save money. I think they just have a target they want to go for, and they go for it. And I know there are elected officials who are on there that are trying to do their best to keep the spending under control, but it's out of control, as far as I'm concerned. So... Hearing none. Call for the question. All those in favor approving the Center Region Council of Governments 2025 budget, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No? Okay, budget passes. Or our approval of the budget passes. Okay, next up, public hearing for Half Moon Township 2025 budget. So what we're going to do is we're going to...
7:38.
Call the hearing open at 7:38 for the budget. And this is an unusual thing, because anybody that would like to come up and speak on the budget certainly may in the middle of the budget, because that's what it's all about. So who would like to be first? Ms. Miller.
Again, I just want to ask the same question I asked before about funding for both the fire department and EMS. I know I went to the COG meeting, Upper Ball Deegan COG meeting last week for the fire company, and they said that they hadn't gotten what they had asked for from the townships for their budget, so they had to make adjustments to their budget. And I know we no longer have a dedicated millage for the fire company. And I'm just concerned in the budget, again, that the company, that there, nothing has changed over the past year. They're still basically looking for donations from people to keep their operations going. And I'm concerned, again, for this township, that we're going to have fire and emergency services for us. I'm getting older, my husband's getting older, I can see us having to call the ambulance, and maybe even having to have fire come to help assist, because I know that a lot of times they go out to assist at different things. And I want to make sure that those things are there and that we are properly funding them. And again, as a taxpayer, I know I have to pay for roads. I have to pay whether or not I drive on any of the roads in Half Moon Township. If I only drive on one road, I have to pay the same as everybody else here. And yet, it's not the same for both fire and EMS. I am paying more because I do donate to both the fire company to keep them going and EMS. And I volunteer for the EMS to drive, okay? So I think as a citizen of Half Moon Township, I am certainly doing my fair share. Why isn't everybody paying for those same services? Because we all need them. They're no different than roads. We need to have fire be able to respond, and we need to have ambulance be able to respond. You never know when there's going to be an emergency. So again, I'm concerned about that in the budget, because I don't feel that the budget reflects what those services need. Thank you.
Just to answer Ms. Miller's question, because she asked about the millage. Brett, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'm going to put you on the spot. Can you express to the public what the contracts are? How the contracts are?
I can, just give me...
Not there.
So what the board decided to do this year was go back to a contract that is based on millage. And it does come out of the general fund millage. That would be the one difference. The Port Matilda Fire Company is set to receive .890 mills of the anticipated 2025 assessed value, which comes out to $82,000 and some change. Is a mill, so that's going to be where the fire company will receive, $72,983.40. The Warriors Mark Fire Company is set to receive .270 mills, which will equate to $22,141.03. The Warriors Mark Fire Company has signed the agreement and said they are happy with it. The Port Matilda Fire Company has not signed the agreement, but a few months ago, they said it was not due to the millage rate, it was due to some of the legalities mentioned in other sections, and that's bouncing between attorneys. As far as the EMS, they, Port Matilda EMS is set to get .560 mills of the 2025 assessed value, and that is $45,922, which is a little higher than they received this year, and they did confirm that they are happy with the current amount as it stands.
And how much money did we give the EMS about five years ago?
Five years ago? I don't know. I can tell you, based on my budget, 2023, they received $14,000, based on the budget.
And that...
Wasn't the fire company getting 1.7 mill from Half Moon Township?
No, they weren't getting that much. That was just EMS tax. And it was divvied up between the fire companies and the ambulance.
How much was the fire tax before it was repealed?
It was 1.7, but they did not receive it. It was separated between Port Matilda, Warriors Mark, and some was kept in our savings to roll over for emergencies.
So it's fair to say it was earmarked for...
It was earmarked, yes.
But not necessarily for the Port Matilda Fire Company.
And how much did the fire company ask for last year in millage when they put together the budget? Wasn't it two mills or something?
At one point, I don't know if that was last year, but at one point, very recently, it was two mills, correct?
So we as a, we as a community have decided that they don't need what they really asked for, and so we gave them...
We gave them how those millages were arrived, or they were the millage equivalent of what we gave them this year as a starting point. That's what got approved. I do know this year, they started, they started at the COG to ask for a per capita, but I don't believe that gained traction. It never came back to here. I don't know what that per capita tax was.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a comment. There are five municipalities that the Port Matilda Fire Company serves, that the Port Matilda EMS serves. Actually, there's six Port Matilda EMS serves. And, you know, what we do or don't do in this township is not the only factor in how much money these organizations get, okay? And for example, in the case of EMS, we pretty much tripled the amount of money that they got from, got previous, because before it was a donation. They came up, they formed a board, they came up with a budget, and we funded that budget. Prior to that, they never presented a budget. And I'll go on further about the EMS. Ferguson Township, a significant part of Ferguson Township is served by Port Matilda EMS. And yet, the amount of money they get from Ferguson Township is minimal. It is, I think it was $3,000 or something to that effect that they got from Ferguson Township, who covers the western end of their township, you know? And just to give you an example, a mill in Half Moon is about $82,000 or something like that. I believe a mill in Ferguson Township is something on the order of $500,000, $600,000. Okay, so we need, you know, things relative. And you can't, we can't just look at one entity or one municipality being responsible for doing what five municipalities need to be doing collectively. And in terms of increasing taxes, as far as I can tell, the other municipalities have not raised their taxes in any way to increase contributions to the fire company, any of the other four municipalities. So I just wanted to point that out, that there's more to the formula than just Half Moon Township.
Mr. Crowe, wait, wait a minute, wait a minute.
A year ago...
I was going to have Mr. Crowe come up, because he seemed to want to say something, and I want to make sure he got his comment in.
Yeah, well, yeah, comments, questions, so we, back and forth. I was on the fire company board last year, not this year. I'm still a member over there. But, you know, we did have some back and forth over budget, and I understand that, you know, I've been going to darn near every COG meeting since, you know, for the last two, three years. And I know it's a, you know, it's a collective of politicians. It's tough. And, yeah, we want to make sure that each township is represented. But there was very little negotiation. I think there was a meeting or so scheduled between municipalities. But my expectation of a citizen is Half Moon Township would represent and lift the sales, not carry the fire company and not carry the load for the other municipalities, but take a leadership role in making sure that these things are funded. The fire company asked for twice what they got, and that's not all on Half Moon, and I sure as heck don't want to be carrying the load for all these municipalities. But the answer from Half Moon Township, you know, in a draft budget that was thrown over there, was that they should just double their fundraising. So I don't know how many of you folks know what it takes to raise money, and many of us raise for other entities and for, you know, charities and such. But that fire company is mostly there to put out fires. So asking firemen to host more bingo and sell more raffle tickets and gun raffles and the things like that, we're not going to raise another $20,000 that way. They're humping as it is, and they're raising $20,000, $30,000 a year sometimes. But the ask in that draft budget was just to email budget over to the fire company was, well, buck up, guys, we expect you to do more before you get more tax dollars. We can't solve that this year. I know the budget's already inked, but we need to do a little better here next year towards lifting the sales of the fire companies so they can put out fires. I didn't even touch on EMS. What a nightmare.
I do tell, will tell you that I do wish that all the municipalities could have a better consensus and the fire company be more focused. I think you get, the fire company, I'm getting different signals from different people. I had heard that they were happy with this year's amount from us. But, but I didn't hear...
They're cordial, they're polite.
Well, they're not always cordial, because I've had not always...
I'm not on the board, I'm not going to speak for the fire.
No, I'm not saying it about you. I'm just saying about the people that I speak with.
Are they happy?
Well, nobody's ever happy. I mean, we would all like $100,000 a year raise if we could get it.
They'd sure be happy if we didn't cut the budget or cut the fire tax. My goodness, we glossed over eliminating that fire tax, the dedicated dollars, and we saw it. When that fire truck, you know, that fire truck had to be replaced, and they found a bargain basement engine rescue for $400,000 and change. They scraped up some of the residual money that was in there from, you know, that fire tax and other things. But the next thing that happened is the tanker went bad this year, blew the engine. So they were able to repair that, again, by scrimping and going to California to get an engine and all these things, but it took us three months to get that engine. That's a million-dollar piece of machinery. We're not going to get there with $90,000 a year from Half Moon Township, that's the biggest entity. We can't solve it here, and I'm not going to belabor this anymore. We have to do better. I'm just...
We and they.
With what?
The other municipalities and the fire company. We all need to...
But we're not leading those municipalities. We're sending Mr. Servello over there to just be part of the crew over there. They're not organized, they're not sitting down, they're not negotiating, we're not even trying to get additional money.
I will tell you...
Did you guys get any money? What's going on in your township? Nothing going on much?
The fire chief has my phone number.
We filled a pothole over there. We're going to work on a bridge next year. It's a bunch of good old boys get together. There's nobody talking about funding. There's no one talking about raising taxes. No one wants to talk about it, but we need to take the lead.
Thank you. Ms. Miller?
Again, I...
I'll get to you, Will.
Just quick, again, a year ago, when EMS was going to go out of business, a year and a half ago, okay? Again, everybody started talking about it, and all the municipalities were talking. I agree 100%. We should not carry the whole load for anything. Everybody should be contributing. But everybody should be contributing equitably for their townships, for these services. And again, there's no talk amongst any of you. I asked this, I don't know, Tammy, when you came on the board, is anybody getting together with the other townships, the other managers to talk about how you can come up with a budget? Yes, I know Half Moon Township came up with a way that their formula that they thought was fair, but nobody got together to discuss with them or anything else, and nobody's doing anything now. So again, the fire company, EMS, is in exactly the same position they were a year ago, and probably a year from now, they'll be in the same position.
Well, I'm going to say actually not so, because the other year, the fire, or the EMS was going to close their doors in November. And if it hadn't been for the actions of this board, they would have been gone.
And again, from these citizens, too, who took a stand to go out there and fight for that EMS.
And I hope everybody out there has their ambulance membership card as well.
But I'm saying we have to discuss with everybody, because there are all those townships, and they should all be contributing to keep these services going.
And I agree with you on that. Mr. Koalik?
You were here when I did it, but when I was supervisor, I wrote a 50-page report with the fire company. And both Warriors Mark and Port Matilda got more money. But the same issues we got then, we still have today. We need people like you to go to the meeting and explain. You want to know some of the problems? Okay, the fire company where it's housed, which is Port Matilda Borough, okay? That municipality has to pay their workman's comp. They don't pay the workman's comp. All the townships are paying the workman's comp. And then I hear all you people talking about millage, but you don't look at one thing. That fire company takes care of five municipalities in three school districts, okay? The millage ain't the same. It's not the same at all. So how can you say Half Moon got to pay two, and Taylor Township got to pay two? And Taylor...
No, I didn't say equitable. But you're right, you have to look at each township.
Yeah, but you've got to look at the big picture. Taylor is split in half. We're actually split in thirds. Alpha, I didn't hear anybody say about Alpha. And Alpha's well-funded by COG, okay? But they're one of the fire companies here.
Yes, I understand, they come, yes.
You know?
They are, and they're very lucky.
And then the other thing to look at, I'm not pointing fingers or anything, you know, earlier we were pointing fingers at Ron, you know, I'm just picking on Ron now, okay? But when there's a fire over here in that, regardless what time of day it is, okay? Which companies are here first?
Alpha.
You know, I'm not picking, I'm not picking Alpha.
Alpha might be here first, but they also have T-Firemen.
Well, they got three, they got three stations.
Regardless, if they're here first, it doesn't matter.
One at a time, please, one at a time.
Yeah, but you've got to look at that big picture, you know? Same way with the ambulance service, okay?
Mr. Koalik, if you've got something to say, direct it to the board, please, Ms. Miller. Please wait your turn.
But that's one thing we've got to look at, you know, if you're talking millage and that. Now, when I wrote this report up, that was back, I think, '97, correct?
Yes, about that.
Okay, what I did, and the numbers were ridiculous, I went by people, people in the house. Okay, if you're sitting there making babies, and you got six babies, then you pay for the six babies, okay? But then that person's renting the place, so they're not paying the taxes. It's the guy that owns the houses paying the taxes, you know? And that's what I used, and I use figures then.
Well, we're not going to, we're not going to solve this tonight, but Ms. Miller, do you have anything else to add?
I just, again, want people to start talking to other people, that maybe we can come up with something that's going to be equitable, that is going to be, we're Half Moon Township citizens paying their fair share, along with Port Matilda Borough and Worth Township and Houston Township, everybody.
And Taylor, yeah.
I got one other, I got one other thing to throw in the picture.
Please make it quick.
Okay. I know you're talking about the money and what they want and that, okay? But again, you've got to look at the big picture. I'm an electrician for a living, okay? Last year's budget, okay, they wanted a $78,000 generator put down there.
We heard this story already. You're already on the record on this, sir.
Mr. Crowe, you're not being addressed.
But I went over there on my own time to try to help the guys up. They hadn't done nothing yet, okay? So, yeah, they need stuff, which you don't need a Cadillac.
All right. Does anybody else like to, please come up here and have a seat? With regard to the budget, yes.
Oh, yeah. Brian Hoffman, former treasurer of the fire company, so I'm intimately familiar with their income and expenses.
I would expect so.
What's that?
I would expect so.
They're, the current funding model is not sustainable long-term. What they ask for is actually less than they need. They're trying to be accommodating, maybe is the right word, but with capital expenses factored in, it's not sustainable the way it is long-term. Fundraising is going to become more difficult every year, because there's less people to do it and less people get involved in it. The direct mail thing, that, only a small percentage of the residents actually respond to that. And the ones that do, most of them give very little. And you can say they should give more, but they're not going to. It's just reality. They're not going to give more. Fundraising's going to go down probably every year. The only sustainable model is from this forum, right? And no, we should not, in Half Moon, like everybody, other people have said, carry the whole load. But at the very least, we should carry our part of it. And say, okay, this is what you asked for. Here's our percentage or however that formula is determined, right? But we at least should do our part, ideally be a leader in the process.
Thank you. Any other budget stuff?
I just have a couple of questions on the fire company. Is that okay? It's budget related.
Well, it's budget related.
Great, great. Andy Merritt, James Hill Road. I emailed Brett. I noticed in this budget, Alpha's not in it. But last year there was a major dust-up, not major, kind of a big dust-up over should Alpha be in the budget? Where'd Alpha go?
From what I understand, Alpha did not want our money.
So last year, did we check with them before we gave them the money or did we just say, here's $13,000?
We as a board felt that it was appropriate.
Oh, I get that.
To give some money.
Right. Because they, because they covered 17% of the township.
Why didn't we do it this year?
Something to that effect.
I'm not saying we should. I'm saying we should take that 13,000.
Because they suggested to us that it'd be better for us to give the money to Port Matilda or Warriors Mark than to give it to them. And that's their prerogative to do that. We wanted to be equitable in terms of who was covering the township. And that was a formula that we did at the time. And it's, we showed a coverage map, percentages of the coverage. And so we based that on that coverage to make sure that we were representing ourselves to them, you know, and saying, okay, we, you know, because you're providing this service to a part of, here, here is your share of that.
And it is valuable. There's no doubt about it. I agree.
And they responded, they said, well, we would prefer that you don't do that. So that's how it changed.
So I'm wondering, when I looked at the numbers at Brett, and I appreciate the email quick response, Brett. The, the numbers from last year to this year are not significantly different. We're talking a few hundred dollars in funding. Why aren't we taking that 13,000 and dividing it, let's say, just say 75-25 or 78-22? That $13,000 could go a long way. I mean, it's there. We obviously had the money. And if Alpha said, we don't need it, give it to them, why don't we, why don't we do that?
So to clarify Andy's questions, which Andy knows the answers to, so I spoke with Mr. Kaufman at the time. And he advised us, he did not necessarily tell us what to do with the money. He said until we have an agreement with Alpha, they would prefer to not receive funding unless an agreement was in place. As far as the 13,000, that was not included in this because when the discussion started with the agreements, the starting amounts were the equivalent of what we gave them this year and that's how they stayed.
But I mean, if we have that 13,000, we counted for it last year, why don't we just account for it this year?
Did we not give them additional money this year, aside from what we appropriated for next year?
We did out of the residual ARPA funds, yes.
So do what, I mean, if the money was there last year, the money's here this year. Divided 70, I don't know the percentage, I think it's 78-22 or something like that, something like that. 78-22, whatever that turns out to be, here's an extra 3,000 to Warriors Mark, here's an extra 10,000 to whatever it is. And, and I mean, it, it could go a long way. The other thing I don't understand is we're talking about a volunteer fire company and I don't think they should have to fundraise. The fundraising, if they do fundraise, they're paying themselves. I do not understand, I don't, I've talked to John all the time. I'm like, I don't know why you do what you do. Because you spend every night at the fire company and all your people spend every night at the fire company to volunteer for us and then they have to, then we kind of nickel and dime them. Fundraising, I look at it kind of as a part-time job. If I have a full-time job, my boss, my full-time job doesn't look at me and go, well, you, you work at Lowe's on weekends. So I'm going to cut your full-time salary because you're picking up extra money at Lowe's. It's not. It's volunteer and volunteer means volunteer. So we should make sure all their needs are met. Anything they do fundraising, that's theirs. That's how I view it. Just like anything I do in a part-time job is mine. I don't, that's how it's got to be. And, and it's just, it's sad that we come here every year and have to do this and we didn't have to, used to do this. So.
No, we just ignored them before. That's, that's what happened. You know, I, I know you were a supervisor and you know I was a township manager.
Yeah.
Okay? And I hearken back to the old days.
Yeah.
When we gave them basically nothing. And we gave nothing to the ambulance company almost. And I had to browbeat, and I know you weren't here at the time, but I had to browbeat the board to give them anything.
And I'm glad you did.
And I, and I still felt it was way underfunded.
And I still think it's underfunded.
But, and I know that, and, and I know why. And I know you have an affinity for the Port Matilda Fire Company. And those guys do great work over there.
Yeah, when my house got struck by lightning, they were there in about four minutes.
Right, which was fantastic. It's like the best response time that they've ever done. And it was your house.
Well, it was amazing. And they were showing up in shorts and gear. And I'm like, who are you guys? And then they carried our burning dryer down the stairs outside for us. I'm like, I don't even know who you guys are. And here we have to sit and nickel and dime.
And it would be nice if, if all the municipalities could sit down and we could get this worked out. And I wish we would.
Yeah, I agree. I know you, I know you do, Dave. I know you do.
And you know, it's, it's not a matter of, we don't want it to happen, but we're, you know, we don't necessarily get a lot of cooperation from other governmental entities when it comes to that stuff.
I know, and there's, I get it.
Unfortunately, I think sometimes people look at Half Moon and say, well, you guys are the wealthy ones. Just write the check.
Yeah.
And another one sit there and say, huh, man, a hundred dollars. We just can't do that.
Yeah.
And, you know, I understand they don't have the, the tax base that we have.
And that's true.
And, and maybe the houses aren't valued the same and that kind of stuff. But there has to be an equitable solution.
Sure.
And the, the problem that I see is, I, I think there's two things going on here. One, I think the fire company came to Half Moon Township and said, we are absolutely in dire straits and we need to put new tires on all the trucks and we got to. I think this board is, is good enough to step up and say, we will help you through the mess.
Sure.
As we stepped up and said, we will help the ambulance company to keep their doors open till we can figure out what's going on.
Yeah.
Okay? We don't want our fire company to get to that position. We don't want Warriors Mark to get to that position.
Right.
But, you know, I got Warriors Mark Township down there and you can't hardly give them money.
Right.
You know, their fundraising is so successful.
Sure.
And, and I know that people from there have talked to Port Matilda Fire Company and said, hey, you know, we could set you up with this, this and this. And it's just crickets. So if you have a model that's working that, and I know they recently had a gun raffle and they made a pile of money.
Good.
Which is great.
Yeah.
But, you know, maybe Port Matilda doesn't raffle guns. Maybe they raffle something else. But, but their model seems to work really good.
Sure.
I would like Port Matilda to have that similar model.
Sure.
I know what you're saying. Nobody wants to bake cakes and sell soup and, because, because it's a pain and you don't make that much money. But when you have a company that's part of our system, that is able to successfully run a couple of raffles. I mean, they, they used to have a carnival down there and they dumped it because they said, we can make so much more money. They make, they make piles of money just selling ice, as crazy as that seems.
Yeah.
So, I mean, those things are available and I would like those fire companies to talk a bit. So that would help relieve some of the stress.
Yeah.
But I would also like the municipalities we work with to get together because if Half Moon Township writes the big check every time, you will never get anybody else to step up and do anything.
Sure.
You know, because they'll just say, well, you guys can pay for it. As long as Half Moon's paying for it, it's fine. And I don't disagree, Andy, you know, you and I are probably a lot alike when it comes to fire company support.
Yeah.
At ambulance company.
Right.
And I want them to be the most successful fire companies out there.
Absolutely.
Because when that alarm bell goes, I'm not sitting there going, oh, man, I'm planning on having a fire today.
Right.
You know, we'll call, we'll call the, you know, the fire company out. Because it happens when nobody's expecting it.
Right.
And at the worst possible time. And here we're coming into Christmas season and somebody's going to have a, there'll, there'll be a fire out here, somebody, where it's somebody's house.
Absolutely.
And we want them to be prepared. But we want them to come in and be able to, to sit down with us and the other municipalities and work it out. And, you know, Chief Weatherright's been good to talk to in the past, but sometimes I talk to him and I think, okay, we got something figured out. And then all of a sudden it just falls apart and I'm not sure why.
Yeah.
So I'm not saying it's his fault. I'm just, you know, they're a committee over there too, so.
Yeah. Just a couple of things. I, again, I just want to reiterate, I think volunteer firefighters should not have to fundraise to fund themselves. That's just me personally. And the second thing is, and to Ron's point, it's a great point, Ron. A mill here is not the same as a mill in Houston Township. And if we're going to base things on mills and everybody's going to pay a millage amount, Houston Township's millage is less than ours, whereas Ferguson's, I think, Ron, I have no idea how much Ferguson is, but I know it's got to be more than ours. So if we're going to base everything on mills, we've got to find a way to find.
Even if it was based on per capita, there's got to be some function out there.
Right. There's got to be a way to balance this because a Houston Township mill or a Worth Township mill, my in-laws live in Worth Township. I know their millage is lower. I'll just, I just know it. And I have property there and I know the millage is lower. So it's, we've got to find a way to do that. If you're going to do it on mills, then a mill has to be equal everywhere you're, you're talking. Arrive at a figure that's a mill is equal.
I think we were just trying to come up with something to try to get everybody else to go with.
Yeah.
And we couldn't get everybody else to go with it. But, but we're doing.
I just want to clarify one thing. We are the only one going by mills. Everyone else just gives them, they more consider it a donation.
Okay, all right.
It may equate to a millage in their eyes, but how I've always talked to them, they consider it more a donation.
That's important, no. Thanks, Brett. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the budget? Well, wait a minute.
Where, where did the 18K go? Did it just go into the general budget?
It would have, it would have went in somewhere within the general budget. You could find the, you're talking the 13,000 Andy was referring to.
Was it 18, like?
It was 13 and some change. Yeah, I mean, you could find it in different ways. It does actually, if you want to have it find a home on 489 unencumbered funds, which are funds that aren't tied to any specific project, there is 23,000 in there. You could say 13,000 of that could be earmarked.
So when Alpha declined that, that 13,000, would the board have the latitude to provide that to the other fire companies? Because 13,000 is a lot of bingo. In fact, that's probably the entire.
They would have, given the budget set this way, how they would have to do it next year is use unencumbered funds. So they, as in next year's and 2025, they could give more money next year, but it won't be out of that line item where you'll see it. It could be out of this budget though, yes.
Right. How much did we give?
Port Matilda Fire Company, Warriors Mark Fire Company and, and Port Matilda EMS and additional funds this year.
7,000 and some change.
Each.
Each. It was divided equally, correct?
Because we could use that money, we sometimes give for capital needs, correct?
What you could do next year, even to one of Dave's points where he says if they come in and ask for money, you have two options. You can use your current year's budget and use unencumbered. Or if you, it's a large ticket item, you can dip into your own reserves and declare an emergency and fill out the proper paperwork and give that to them. There are options available. It's just, it's going to be on a case-to-case basis.
I wouldn't have a problem taking unencumbered funds at the, yeah, unencumbered funds and giving, and, and dividing it, I guess, between the three emergency services.
So let's give an example. Say, we have a good year and all 23,000 is available at the end of next year. This time next year, you will hold a resolution that says, we're going to take line item 489 and divide it however you so choose. And then they'll get that extra money. And, and it doesn't even have to be December. Just generally, that's when it's done. It could be any time next year. It could be done anywhere, yes.
Well, you know, we just had an incident to sort of address your concern, Andy, but, you know, the engine blew up on the, on the one truck. And, you know, I'm not getting anything back from the fire company saying, hey, you know, it's going to be $28,000 to repair this thing. Can you help us? All you got to do is ask.
And, and that's a fair, that's a fair.
And that was also addressed at the COG meeting where we worked out, we worked out an agreement with the fire company for them to spend, for us to, to split evenly the cost of the repair between the COG funds, which is the municipal funds, and the fire company funds. So we did split that cost. So it was, it ended up being 50 some, $57,000, I think, or $58,000. And we split that. So, you know, so that, that's getting fixed. I mean, they're finding other additional problems and I'm sure there's going to be additional expenses. So, and that's going to, that's going to have to be addressed as well. So that, that's getting fixed. The, the engine, you know, we, we finance, well, we didn't, the, the fire, I don't know how this exactly works, but the fire company funded or financed the new engine rescue. And, but we are paying the loan. The municipalities are paying the loan. For that. So, you know, so they got the engine that they wanted. So things, I, I think things are better than they were before. I think they should continue to improve. I agree with communications. We've got to keep in mind that we have five municipalities and they have independent boards. So we sit there at the COG and we can have these discussions, but they go back, they're not going to commit to anything because they've got to discuss it with their respective boards. So, and that's always been an issue, a problem with trying to address a problem with it, within the COG, okay? Because you've got five municipalities that are independent. It's like herding cats. And, and, you know, so.
Can you point me to any time where the budget even comes up in the COG meeting? There are public meetings over there. And, and again, they're just all routine. We talk, we talk about routinely what the townships are doing, but there's never any discussion of increasing funding to the fire. I, I must have missed it. But I've been to most of the meetings in the last three years and I've never been to the meeting that said, we need to lift the sales of the fire company and go back to our boards and fix this.
I'll tell you what happened.
I've never seen that leadership from, from anybody over there.
Well, I was asked, this is always seems to be the consensus, well, Ron, you go present, you know, come up with a, a proposal. Okay, so that's what I did. And that's, that's what you were referring to earlier. That was my proposal on how, just to show, give a picture of a budget, okay? That was my example of a budget, considering that we have both fundraising and municipal funding and, and other sources. There's grants and other sources. So.
But the main thing you raised was the fundraising, which is.
I did not raise the fundraising. You're wrong about that.
I do believe, does that budget that you proposed to the fire company have about $120,000 of fundraising in it?
It had, it had an average of 100 because that's what, I forget what the average was, to be honest with you. But it, it was based on several years, any time of the year, any, any time during the year, you'd see an average in, in the, in their fundraising balance, okay? Which is several counts.
The information that I looked through, I'd never saw an average of 100,000. There was also never any expenses taken out that cost for the fundraising. And I go back to, I'm hearing a lot of citizens and I agree with our citizens, that our volunteer fire company should not be required to fundraise, period.
Well, fire companies do fundraise.
That's their choice, but they should not be required and nor should it be part of their budget.
Okay, well, that would be an exception to what happens generally.
People are just going to have to dig deeper into their wallet and write out a check. All right. Anything else on the budget? We beat the fire company to death. Okay, hearing done. I'm going to close the hearing at 8:13 PM. All right. Got a possible motion to adopt the 2024, or, yeah, 2025 budget. Do I hear a motion to adopt the budget?
I'll move, make that motion.
Motion, how about a second? Moving second. Any discussion by the board? Yes, no, maybe? All right, call for the question.
My only discussion is I agree with our citizens. I think we need to do, continue to do work better. We've done better. We've, we did try to work on some things with our emergency services and I, I think we can still do better. But I think that conversation continues, so.
I agree we can do better. We've just got to get other people to help do better.
Yeah, I mean, we tried.
It's not just us.
Right, correct. We tried, but it didn't really go far, but.
Okay, call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Budget passed. Next up, resolution 2024-19 for 2025 real estate taxes. Brett, would you read those off or does Amy have those numbers?
Either or. They haven't changed. So your general tax levy will be 5.37 mills and your open space preservation tax levy will be two mills. And those are the two levies.
And earned income tax is still a half percent.
Oh, yeah. All the, that has nothing to do with earned.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the resolution? Do I hear a second? Moving second. Any discussion by the board? Call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Next up, open space preservation board recommendation, removing the advanced payment option from the open space preservation board. Do I hear a motion to do that?
Some of.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion by the board.
This was as recommended by the open space board, right?
When's the last time we made an advanced payment? Do you know offhand?
Well, it was the last time advanced payment?
Yeah, it was a 10-year, but I don't.
It was last year.
Last year. That was at Fisher Farm?
No.
No.
It was not the Fisher Farm.
Podgurski.
Podgurski.
And before that?
2011.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's a while.
So last year and then 2011 prior to that.
Correct.
And, and the, just to remind everybody, the history of the advanced payment, the reasoning for that was?
To get people in the program when it first started.
Basically, it was a carrot to entice people.
To sign up.
In the, to sign up, which it did work because we currently have 32 properties in the open space program, 2,080 acres. So what the board is trying to focus on now is permanently preserving, because that was the idea of this lease program. It was to tie up these acreages so that we could then, at the time, as we had funds, permanently preserve. And we do currently have 11 owners that are interested in permanent preservation. So by eliminating the advanced payment, it's going to allow us to e, more easily move things to permanent preservation because then we don't have to worry about how to figure out the money that was already paid. And there's also a possibility that we won't have to have as much legal work done on the front end because then we wouldn't necessarily have to be first lien because we don't have any outlayed money. And it should just clean things up and it should also help us focus on our current goal, focus on permanently preserving acreage. So that was the, and the ordinances are being looked at and revised now. So the timing was appropriate.
Would you describe our program as successful?
Yes. We, yes, it's been successful. Like I said, we have 32 properties and over 2,080 acres. We have some of that, smaller percentages in permanent. We do have impermanent. But like I said, we still have, the majority of that is still in leased. So, and, and moving people to permanent will also reduce our cash outlay too. Because while we'll have. Because while we'll have, we've been partnering with like Center County, Center County Preservation Board and Clearwater. If we can partner with those, take some money and permanently preserve those, get the development easements on that, then we're not paying out lease money then on that property for the next eighty years, if it was a ninety-nine-year lease or sixty years. So it will increase the longevity and take down the expense of the program if we can move things to permanent. So that's what we're focusing on. And it's not preventing getting ninety-nine-year leases. We can still take, if there's properties that meet our.
There would just be no advanced payment.
There would just be no advanced payment. We can still run the lease program, but not be an advanced payment.
Anybody else on the board? All right, call for the question. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Next up, motion to set a public hearing for the agricultural district A-one and RPD revisions. This is to upgrade, well, Amy, you've been involved with it. Do you want to just give the crowd a brief?
Um, so staff in the planning commission reviewed the A-one district and the RPD standards. And basically, we increased the setbacks. We added a yield plan requirement to the RPD. And we.
RPD stands for Rural Preservation Development.
And that's setting aside open land.
As well.
And then we took the permitted uses and put them in a table, so it's easier to follow, to read. That's the gist of the changes that were made. That are proposed, I should say.
Discussion by the board. Call for the question. All those in favor doing the advertising signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay. Next up, award aggregate and bituminous materials for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. And I see, go ahead.
So this past Monday, December ninth, we had our bid opening for our materials. Unfortunately, this year, we didn't get a lot of responses on that, but we still have some decent pricing. Glenna Hallbager was awarded all of our aggregates, both pickup and, or, I guess I should say, not awarded, they were the low bidder of the aggregates, both pickup and delivered, as well as the pickup bituminous. With that being said, we did not have any delivered bituminous prices put in. So this will need to go out, or just those will need to go out for rebid, for legality of this. So we'll have to take care of that. But at this point in time, I'm proposing that we award the low bidder on what we've received.
So, can you explain, okay, what are we awarding?
So as of right now, what has been bid, which would be the pickup price for bituminous materials, asphalt materials, as well as the both pickup and delivered aggregates, and the cold patch material, and then some of our bituminous prime coat, has all been bid. The only thing that we did not receive a bid on was a delivered price of asphalt materials.
So, all right.
So that, if we were to use any type of quantity of that, we legally have to put that back out to bid in hopes that we receive price.
Okay.
Is it common to not bid, to put on the delivered?
It is sometimes. Last year was one of the first times I remember in a couple of years that we have gotten delivered price on it. That company did not bid this year. I'm not sure why. It was emailed to them, and I reached out to them with no response, so.
Is it because of time of year or something?
Yeah, I mean, is there an issue with delivery or something?
Um, I mean, it shouldn't be any time of year. This is pretty normal for municipalities to put it out at the end of the year. So they're, they're well aware of.
You say New Enterprise did not bid?
Correct. They did not bid this year.
That's unusual. They usually do.
Um, they bid last year. There has been some years that they have not bid in the past. But I got really good response from them last year. I was hoping to continue that relationship, especially since they were close. But for whatever reason, there wasn't. I mean, we don't use a very large quantity either, so that's, that might be one of the reasons.
But sales are sales, you know.
That's true.
Well. All right, do I hear a motion to approve the, I guess that was low bid for everything, right? Prove the low bids.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion by the board? Call for the question. All those in favor say aye.
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 opposed? Okay, township reports. Does treasurer, secretary, or public works have anything they would like to add?
Do. So while we have not received any formal paperwork on this yet, we were awarded our Center County Liquid Fuels Grant, which would be twenty thousand dollars toward the Smith River Project for twenty twenty-five.
Very good.
And kudos to you for, and the team, for trimming the massive pine trees or whatever they are along five fifty Marenga Road. Lots of good comments out with regards to being able to see now and avoid accidents, so.
A couple of snow events. It is so much nicer taking care of that intersection.
Yes.
It looks nicer.
Yes.
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 It's turned, I feel it turned out really well.
Yeah, so what, I mean, is it the landowner's responsibility now to deal with the stumps, or is it, because it's in the roadway, it's whatever?
We made sure they're low, but it is, it is the landlord's responsibility at that point, yes.
Yeah, okay. But nonetheless, kudos. It's much better.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything else to report before we wrap it up?
All of my COG meetings were canceled.
Must be getting too close to the holidays. All right, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Do I hear a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. He's done at eight twenty-five P.M. Thank you all for coming.